All right, good evening. The time is 7:00 PM and I'll now call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is the acceptance of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion we accept the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you both. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Next item is the Budget Workshop Adoption of Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024 Budget. Now, we have completed our budget workshops, our budget deliberations, and in your packet this evening, there is a resolution with the numbers that we finalized last week. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ralph. I'll second. Okay, would you like to...
Yep, Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, April 5th, 2023. Adoption of the 2324 Fiscal Year Budget. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Portland hereby adopts the proposed fiscal year 2023-24 budget in the amount of $38,280,900, detailed as follows. Town General Government, $14,733,583. And Board of Education, $23,547,317.
Thank you. And Mike Pelton, you seconded that?
I did.
All right. Any discussion on this?
I just want to make one comment that I know we didn't put it in this year, but I think it's imperative that we find a way to add a resource into Water Department next year.
Agreed. We do need that. Any other discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Next up on your agenda is approval of minutes. Ralph pointed out to me this afternoon, and it's a good thing he did, that we do not have minutes for the Budget Workshop on March 21st, 2023, and we don't have minutes for March 15th, 2023, for a regular meeting. So, the March 28th, 2023 Budget Workshop minutes have been posted. They are on the website and have been sent to you. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. That is the Budget Workshop for March 28th.
I make a motion we approve the budget, the minutes for the meeting of March 28th.
I'll second that.
Thank you both. All those in favor, or any errors, changes, or omissions? See none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. So, thank you. We'll get the other minutes for our next meeting in April. So, thank you. Next up, under Communications and Correspondence, we have Michael Van Deventer here. Michael is our auditor with Mahoney Sable CPAs and Advisors. And how many years now, Mike, have you been our auditor?
Since, uh, Mahoney Sable since 2013.
Since 2013, so wow. Ten-year anniversary.
Ten-year anniversary, that's right.
Well, thank you for being here. Welcome.
I feel like I was just here the other day and it was a year ago. All right, well, thank you very much again. My name is Mike Van Deventer and I'm a partner at Mahoney Sable, ultimately responsible for overseeing the audit and issuing the reports on behalf of the firm. You should have received packets that includes the financial statements, the single audit reports, as well as some communication letters. I'm basically going to summarize all of those reports in my presentation. So, if we can turn to the first slide of the presentation. I'll cover the scope of work, the audit reports that were issued, provide some overall financial highlights, make our required communications, and certainly happy to answer any questions as we go along. In terms of the scope of work, again, no changes in the scope of work from what's been performed in prior years. We did do an audit of the town's financial statements. We did that audit in accordance with the auditing standards issued by the American Institute of Certified Public Accounts. And we also performed that in accordance with the government auditing standards issued by the Government Accountability Office. In addition, based on the level of funding that was received and expended by the town, we did perform both federal and state single audits. The federal single audit is performed in accordance with the uniform administrative requirements and the state single audit is performed in accordance with the State of Connecticut Single Audit Act. We also perform an agreed-upon procedures engagement on the end-of-school-year reports that are filed by the school district with the Department of Education. In addition to those test services, we do also perform some non-audit services for the town. So, we do assist in the preparation of your financial statements, as well as the schedule of federal awards, the schedule of state financial assistance, and the related notes. We also assist in converting your governmental fund financial statements to your government-wide financial statements. In order for us to be able to perform those services and remain independent of the town, management is required to oversee those services and ultimately accept responsibility for them. And again, Tom Robinson, in his role as Director of Finance, has ultimately accepted responsibility for those services. In connection with the audit, we do issue a number of reports. The main report is the report on the financial statements. We did issue unmodified opinions on your financial statements. Again, an unmodified opinion is the opinion you would want to see as a board and is expressed when we've concluded that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Again, our opinion does provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from a material statement whether due to error or fraud. In addition to the report on the financial statements, we do issue a report on compliance and on internal control over financial reporting. The thing you'll note in this report is we do not actually express an opinion on your compliance with laws and regulations or on the effectiveness of your internal controls. Essentially during the course of performing the audit, if we identify a material non-compliance with laws and regulations or a material weakness in your internal controls, we're required to include in this report. And again, we do not identify and report any such matters. In connection with the federal single audit, we issue a report on compliance and on internal control at the federal award level. In this report, we do actually express an opinion on your compliance with your major federal programs. For fiscal year 2022, the total federal awards expended by the town was about 2.4 million. The major programs that were tested were the Child Nutrition Grant Cluster and the Education Stabilization Funds. We did issue unmodified opinions on your compliance over those programs. And again, we did not report any deficiencies in your internal control over grant compliance. We issue a similar report in connection with the state. For fiscal year 2022, the total state financial assistance received and expended was about 6.1 million. The majority of that consists of your education cost-sharing funds, which is exempt from our testing. The portion that was non-exempt was about 1.3 million. Your major programs were the Open Choice Program and the Town Road Program. Again, issued unmodified, clean opinions on compliance over those programs. I'll pause here and just open it up if anybody has any questions in terms of the scope of work or the audit reports that were issued. This next section goes over your financial highlights. And again, there's a lot of financial information in the financial statements. It's over 100 pages, so this is just more or less a summary. Certainly, if there was anything of financial issues, we would include it in this correspondence. The first slide goes over your general fund budgetary highlights. And again, your original budget did provide for the use of fund balance in the amount of 300,000. Your final budget included 468,000 in supplemental appropriations to fund capital improvements, as well as 140,000 from additional revenues to fund police private duty. Your actual change in fund balance was an increase of about 196,000, so that did result in an overall favorable budgetary variance of about 964,000. That 964,000 was driven by a revenue surplus of about 378,000 and then an expenditure surplus of about 586,000. Again, no budgetary compliance issues were identified. Next slide goes over your governmental fund financial statements. So, this includes your general fund on a GAAP basis, as well as all of your special revenue and capital project funds. Overall, your combined ending fund balance is totaled about 13.4 million, which was an increase of about 2.1 million from the prior year. Again, that fund balance is comprised of about 7.4 million in your general fund, about 662,000 in your capital project funds, about 3 million in your capital non-recurring funds, and then all of your other funds had a combined fund balance of about 2.3 million. You do continue to report unassigned deficit fund balances in both your sewer and operating funds. The sewer operating fund was reporting a deficit of about 488,000. That was a decrease in the deficit from the prior year of about 151,000. The deficit in the water fund was about 364,000. Again, a decrease in that deficit of about 114,000. So, I look back and this is the third consecutive year that you've been able to reduce those deficits in those funds. So, I'd like to keep to see that trend moving forward. Next slide goes over your government-wide financial statements. And so, again, this includes your governmental funds converted to a full accrual basis of accounting. So, it does include all of your long-term assets and liabilities. The focus on the government-wide financial statements are really on your long-term liabilities from a user perspective. The town is reporting an overall unrestricted net position deficit of about 2.1 million. And again, that deficit is really driven by your long-term liabilities for retirement benefit payments, which are being funded over time through your actuarial determined contributions. In terms of the town and police pension plan, that was reporting a net pension liability of about 12.1 million, which was an increase of about 4.7 million over the prior year. So, again, with the market gains in 2021, that liability decreased significantly. With the market losses in 2022, it's gone back up. So, overall, that plan is about 62.4% funded. Again, down from 76.4% funded as the prior year, primarily related to those investment losses during this year. So, again, you would expect that the funded statics is going to fluctuate year to year over year. Again, the important thing from a town perspective is to evaluate the assumptions that you utilize to determine your actuarially accrued liability, which is your discount rate. And again, there were no significant changes in your overall assumptions that were utilized. For the volunteer firefighter plan, that was reporting a net pension liability of about 990,000. That was an increase of about 125,000 over the prior year, again, driven by the negative return on investments. Again, no significant changes in your actuarial assumptions. This last slide goes over our required communications. And again, these communications are really geared towards when the auditor runs into issues during the course of the audit, that we make sure we communicate those issues to the board. So, again, our audit went fairly smoothly and we had no significant findings. And as such, these communications are brief. In terms of our responsibility under U.S. Generally Accepted Auditing Standards, although we do assist in the preparation of the financial statements, they are the responsibility of management. All of the information in the financial statements did come from the town. Again, it's our responsibility to perform our audit procedures and express our opinion on those financial statements. Overall, there were no changes in the planned scope of the audit that was originally agreed upon. In terms of timing, the fieldwork was performed during the agreed-upon time. However, we did request a one-month extension this year to allow for report preparation, review, and approval. In terms of significant audit findings, we do review your accounting policies and practices. They are consistent with what other municipalities utilize. One of the items we usually communicate is if you implement a new accounting standard during the year. The town was required to implement GASB statement number 87 on leases. In connection with the implementation of that standard, the town did recognize leased assets, liabilities, and related deferred inflows of resources relating to your copier leases, as well as your cell tower leases. Ultimately, the implementation of the standard had no cumulative effect on the beginning net position of the town. So, again, the standard was really driven to recognize assets and liabilities and disclosure. So, the impact on your P and L doesn't really change. So, if you look at the financial statements, you will see that change from the prior year. In connection with our audit work, we do look at significant estimates and judgments. Those consist of estimated useful lives that are assigned to your capital assets, as well as discount rates that are utilized to determine your net pension and OPEP liabilities. Again, we did deem those estimates to be reasonable and consistent with industry practices. There were no significant difficulties encountered in performing the audit. We had no audit adjustments. There were no uncorrected statements. We had no disagreements with management. We did obtain a management representation letter. Again, there were no unusual representations that were requested by us from management. So, I always give the board the example, if we were unable to substantiate a transaction that we selected for testing and we were relying on the representation from management, we would disclose that to you. And we are not aware of any consultations with any other independent accountants. So, again, this really summarizes all of the reports and information that was issued in connection with the audit. Happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Just a question on page six. Actual change in fund balance was an increase 195,000 and a favorable budgetary variance of 963,000. Was that a net overall after everything was said and done last year? Was that the net position of the town that we had almost a million dollars in extra money, both in additional revenue as well as reduced expenses?
So, that is really based on your overall budget.
Right.
So, you had planned to utilize 900, or you had planned to utilize the 300,000 plus the 468,000 from fund balance. Your actual change in fund balance was 195,000. So, your revenues were 195,000 higher than your expenses.
Right.
So, when you combine that with the fact that you had budgeted to use fund balance, that results in an overall budgetary, favorable budgetary variance.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and I think when you look at that, your unassigned fund balance year over year was approximately the same.
Okay.
Those are percentages for pensions. And obviously, they went down just like all of our own investments went down. I mean, are those numbers consistent with what you see across other municipalities?
They are. I think they typically, we see funding percentages anywhere between 60 and 80%. Rarely do we see a fully funded 100% plan. And again, the point being is that you do have time to fund those benefits. And so, the actuary will take that into consideration, that you'll get those investment gains in the future. So, again, you'll see changes in the funded status year over year. But again, as long as you're making your actuarial determined contributions and your assumptions are reasonable, you should have sufficient funds to pay those benefits.
Any other questions for Michael? Looks good. Okay, so just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah.
For another great audit. And I also wanted to say thank you to Tom Robinson as well for another job well done, Tom.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Mike. I don't have anything else under Communications and Correspondence, so we'll move to item seven on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? No one? No one out there? Okay, and I don't see anyone in the chat. So, we will move on to appointment of auditor of public accounts. There is a resolution in your packet. And this is to appoint Mahoney Sable for fiscal year 2023. So...
I'll move it if you...
Yeah, thank you, John.
I make a motion. We approve resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, dated April 5th, 2023, appointment of the auditor of public accounts. Resolved the pursuit to Section 407 of the Portland Town Charter. The Board of Selectmen hereby appoints a firm of Mahoney Sable of 180 Glassenberry Boulevard, Suite 400, Glassenberry, Connecticut, 06033, to audit the books and records of the town for the fiscal period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Thank you, John.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion on this? See none? Call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. The next item is item nine on the agenda. It's another resolution, and this is a contract agreement with Classic Turf Company, LLC. You may recall last week, the Town of Portland had held a special town meeting, as well as a public hearing on the question on allocating the funds necessary to be able to sign this contract agreement. That special town meeting, the resolution passed. And so, now the question before us is to award the contract to Classic Turf Company, which was the bidder on the track project. So, I think we should move the resolution and then we can have a discussion after.
Yeah, I'd like to make the resolution if I can.
Sure.
Resolution Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, April 5th, 2023. Contract agreement with the Classic Turf Company, LLC. Resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes First Selectman Ryan J. Curley to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of the Town of Portland a contract with Classic Turf Company, LLC, of 437 Sherman Hill Road, Woodbury, Connecticut, 06798, for the purpose of RFP number 2023-12, Portland High School Track and Field Improvements Project. Total contract award amount prior to any required change orders is $1,327,911, including ad alternate number one, shot put area, and ad alternate number two, chain link fence.
Thank you. Mike, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, John. Any discussion on this? I know we've had a lot of discussion on this. Any further discussion?
I'll only make one comment. I spent the last three days up on the track with both the high school and the middle school kids. And as I've run out the last couple of days, it needs work. It's going to be well-needed to get that completed. The kids are aware of it. Can't wait till it's done. Looking forward to it.
Thanks, Mike. All right, so I'll call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all.
Godspeed.
The next item is an annual event that we do. And our tax collector, Sinigata, Collector of Revenue, submits a letter every year for the dollar amount that should be suspended and go on to the suspense list for the town. This is something that we do annually. These are funds that, or these are taxes that are still collectible, but there is a higher likelihood that people have maybe moved away or some have been deceased. And so, we move these to the suspense list as our Collector of Revenue deems as appropriate. The grand total this year is $31,387.50. And these are delinquent accounts. Does everyone want to take a moment and review the suspense list?
So, I thought in the past, I remember you have seen when they were deceased. All of these shows address unknown, so I'm just curious. I mean, maybe some of these obviously could be people that are deceased, but it's just interesting that I can remember that distinctly in the past.
A lot of them have that address unknown, which is part of the reason...
Yeah, all of them.
I do want to point out, this is a smaller amount than last year, which is a good thing. I think last year, we moved approximately 50,000 to the suspense list last year. So, 31,000 this year is trending in a better direction. That means there's more revenue that has been collected. That means there's more revenue that has been collected.
So do you need a motion in order to have it done, or is it just an acknowledgement?
Yes, I mean, you need a motion.
Exactly. I'd like to make a motion that we take this list of, this tax suspense list and put it into the appropriate category. Is that what kind of motion you need?
So, yeah, so to move the following accounts into the tax suspense list.
What you said.
I'll second what you just said.
All right. Any, any discussion on this? Do you, Mike, do you want to just read, go through, starting at the two thousand and eleven grand list and then, and then read it down? Just to read it into the record?
All right.
I know, I know Sharon has, has that, but.
All right. So we are agreeing to the following list of amounts to go into the tax suspense list. The total amount is thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents under the following categories. Two thousand and eleven grand list personal property, six thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Two thousand and twelve grand list motor vehicle, seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-six cents. Two thousand and twelve grand list motor vehicle supplemental, one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Two thousand and twelve grand list personal property, forty-nine hundred and, forty-nine, four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Two thousand and thirteen grand list motor vehicle, six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Two thousand and thirteen grand list motor vehicle supplemental, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the last one, two thousand and thirteen grand list personal property, four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Mike, and John seconded. So any discussion on this?
No.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. The next item is another annual event that we do, and this is, we need a public hearing date, and this is for the two thousand and twenty-three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program. I have a note in here that details this. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act is a tax credit program, and it's designed to provide funding for municipal and tax-exempt organizations by providing a corporation business tax credit for businesses which make cash contributions to these entities. So we do this on an annual basis. We have had a church in town that has participated in this, so we, we have to hold this public hearing. And we'll, I propose that we hold it on April nineteenth at six forty-five P.M. And this is just so the Town of Portland can participate in this program and allow those entities, if they choose to participate, to do so in town. So that is the purpose of that.
Do we have to read this resolution?
Uh, yeah, I, I think so, yeah. If we could read the resolution, that would be good.
All right. I will, I will read the resolution. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Twenty-two-three Neighborhood Assistance Act, NAA, Program Participation. Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services is providing the Town of Portland the opportunity to participate in the two thousand and twenty-three Neighborhood Assistance Act, thus allowing interested nonprofit organizations within the municipality to submit applications. And whereas in accordance with the State of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services, the Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing on all programs, and the governing body of the municipality must vote to approve these programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Portland Board of Selectmen does hereby designate the First Selectman Ryan J. Curley as liaison to handle all Neighborhood Assistance Act matters.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Can I also have a resolution to hold a public hearing on six forty-five P.M. on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, for the purpose of the Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program?
I'll make the, I make a motion that we hold a public hearing on April nineteenth at six forty-five P.M. for the, for the two thousand and twenty-three Connecticut Neighborhood Assistant Act program.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sean. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Thank you all. So, and that will be held in the Buck Foreman Room here. I don't think we'll need the middle school auditorium for that one, so. Sure. The next, the next item is appointments to boards and commissions. Are there any appointments this evening?
Nope.
Are there any appointments?
I have one.
Okay.
I would like to put forward Tina Prakash, and I'll make sure I get the spelling of the name straight after. Tina Prakash for a full position on the solidarity committee.
Oh, great.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? I just want to point out Tina's a classmate of mine from grad school, who recently, I think, moved to Portland. Yeah, so welcome, welcome Tina, and thank you for volunteering. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. Next up is refunds of excess payments.
Make a motion for a refund of excess payment, Nissan Infinity LT LLC, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fourteen cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment for Steve Deglovan Mini, sixty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Teresa B. Joka, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixteen cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Johanna M. N. Lewis W. Garalami, forty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Motion for a refund of excess payment, Mazada Airline Avenue LLC, fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, great. We're making our way through the agenda this evening, which is good. Next up is a status report. I do have a, a couple of things I'll share briefly. I had a great meeting today with GZA and DPH on our water, on our search for water. Ryan O'Helfen was their Public Works Director. It looks as though GZA has determined three locations now where we want to drill test wells. Of those three locations, we may only be able to do two based on funding, but both of those two have a lot of potential. We'll, we'll, we'll have to see. We still have to take a look at, at all the numbers before. But we're looking to do those test well drills in May, in mid-May. So this is moving quickly at this point, and I'll, you know, hope to have more information to share, but I think that's, that's good news. And these three locations, meeting with GZA and, and the state today, they talked a lot about how fortunate we are. A lot of towns, when they look for water, may have one option, that, that's really their only option. And we have several options, so that's a, that's a good thing. But we'll, we'll have to wait and see. We did have another meeting yesterday at Brownstone Avenue, two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue, with Enviro, our company that's doing the remediation, as well as tie and bond. And so they've, Enviro consultants and recyclers, they've completed the, the scope of the remediation that they initially were charged with completing. Now, there are additional funds remaining, and so I think I spoke to you at a previous meeting that we want to use those funds to continue to clean up the site. So there's a, there's a building in the center of two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue that we talked about, we're going to remove. And so we had to get the necessary approvals. There's a, there's a SHPO approval, as well as, the other name escapes me, but there's two approvals that we need. And we're, Tie and Bond is submitting those on our behalf, and we're going to be taking as much down, as well as there's some concrete blocks that are there right now, and those will be removed as well. And so we're going to try to make this as, as attractive as possible now. And so that's good. That's good news. And I was told that really, they want to be totally done and out by Memorial Day. So that, that should be moving quickly too. But those are, those are my two updates on, on local projects right now.
I have one question on the wells.
Sure.
All three of those, were they on town property?
Only one of them is town property.
Do we have any plan for the bigger building on Brownstone Avenue as of now?
We don't have a plan yet. Yeah, no plan for the bigger building. But Ryan and I were talking about that while we were down yesterday, and we have some ideas, all of which, you know, would require funding to, to look at. But as of right now, we do not have, have any plans yet. That's it for me. Well, do you have any? You're done?
I think so. I think so. Well, I guess I didn't know if you had one.
Oh.
I'll let you take it.
Okay.
I was part of the process, but you're going to write, write the check.
Do we resolve it? We got that issue done?
Yes. Let me pull up the, let me pull up the email, so I want to get this right. But we have a, we have a, a new, an announcement to make. We have, I am pleased to report that we have hired a new library director, and her name is Jennifer Billingsley, and she is currently Russell Library's Head of Youth and Family Learning. And Jen will be starting on April twenty-eighth. That will be her first day. So certainly, welcome aboard to Jen, and, and we want to thank Jan Nocheck for her twenty years of, of service to the Town of Portland as our library director. So thank you, Ralph. Missed that one.
Well, actually, Jen, I only have one other one since you took that one, but just wanted to say we had our Easter recon on Sunday. It was past Sunday at the New Park, and it was very successful. We had a lot of, a lot of kids. So, and we had, and we had good weather for it as well, so. It was postponed from Saturday, but Sunday was beautiful, so very good event.
Thank you, Ralph. Any other status reports?
The School Facilities Committee met on Monday, and basically, they had a vote of what they want to present to the Board of Selectmen. So the vote went five to three in favor of closing one school. And they're going to give a whole presentation on this, I believe, in June. But moving forward, their, their job has been completed as a committee to what they need to prevent, present to the Board of Selectmen. So with that being said, Charles Britton is going to be writing up a detailed, where you, uh?
An end spec, I believe.
Is that, is, yeah, an end spec of that. So they will be presenting in June the completion of their study, and what they want to present to us, so. So, yeah, it was a five to three vote in favor of closing one school and moving forward with the remodeling of other schools and stuff like that. So you'll, we'll be learning more about that in the months to come up.
And, and their advice is to close Gildersleeve while leaving the Brownstone Intermedia School open. So that was the decision before them, was to either close both schools or, or close one. But they, they did decide early on that they did want to close one school and consolidate. So thank you to them for all of their work. I know that, what was that, two years?
Just about two years, yeah.
Thank you, Mike. And Bobby for serving on that. Thank you.
I, just, just an update. I mentioned to you, Orion, before the meeting started, but I just want to publicly announce, we were on Channel Three News earlier this evening for the solar panels on this. So I, it's, they had an aerial view, and there are a lot of solar panels up there. Pretty impressive.
Yeah. You know what I found out? That I believe Portland is the first program to go through this, this solar. So I was talking with the Green Bank, and they said, you know, they really wanted to publicize this is their first one, and so certainly, it's, it's pretty cool to see we're, we're saving, we're generating solar energy, and we're saving on our, on our purchasing, so.
Speaking of solar, while we're on staff, reports anything with the transfer station?
Not yet. No. We should hear, I believe we should be hearing this month, later this month, but no, I have nothing to report yet on that. Anything else for status reports? Okay. We'll move on to public comment. Anyone, this is a second chance, if anyone in the audience would like to comment? Okay, seeing none. Anyone in the chat on Zoom? I don't see anyone. So with that, we'll move on to Board of Selectmen General Informal Discussion. I do see our attorneys are here for, are on Zoom for our executive session, so I just want to remind everybody to keep it brief tonight. Anyone? Very brief. All right. And I don't have anything for follow-up items at this time. So I would entertain a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussion of a fixed assessment agreement. And I'd like to invite Matthew Ritter and Gregory Muccelli, Muccelli, as well.
I'll make the motion. We enter executive session in regards to fixed assessment agreements.
And I'll second that motion.
Ryan, do you want to adjourn the selectmen meeting? You know, we can start a new Zoom for the executive session.
Well, it's on the agenda. We don't have, we would have to end.
That's what I'm saying, because that we can close this, we can stop the stream.
You can stop the, okay, but they're on now. So should they, should they close out, you're saying, and then come back in?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can do that. I, I think you guys hear that? You can come back in, and in just a minute, we're going to, we're going to end this Zoom stream, and then we're going to have a brand-new one, okay? Okay. Thanks, guys. And I'm going to, I'm going to log out too then.